My time piece shows at six o'clock. So, let's call the special meeting of the Topeka City Council to order. Again, this is a special meeting that for its purpose is to have a workshop format on the budget and actually to provide an opportunity for the council and the staff to engage on the, on budget issues. We will proceed with the roll call.
Mayor Will Gass.
Here.
Council members Hiller.
Here.
Clear.
Here.
Ortiz.
Emerson.
Here.
De La Isla. Jensen.
Present.
Schwartz.
Here.
Cohen.
Here.
And Harmon.
And Councilman Harmon said he had a business engagement tonight that would not allow him to be here. Just brief opening remarks, comments. First of all, council, I, it was called to my attention that I said our special meeting on a Monday night to deal with the city manager selection process is next Monday. That's wrong, as you know. It's a week from Monday. So, make sure that's on your calendars, not next Monday. Next week, we have council meeting and budget meetings. The following week, we have special meeting and council meeting. So, two each week.
Will that be at 5:30?
Five, and yes, and 5:30 here in this location in LAC. And...
Pardon me, Michelle.
Yeah, okay. And I think we're having a couple more council members arriving right now. Those are my comments. We'll have the, you have the copies of the minutes in front of you. Do you see any corrections? Are you satisfied? Is there a, if so, is there a motion to approve?
So move.
Councilwoman Schwartz moves to approve. Councilwoman Clear seconds. Any discussion? All those in favor, raise your right hand.
We have seven yes.
Seven having voted yes, the minutes are approved. Then open to the interim council, interim city manager Doug Gerber for comments and all the, the finance people.
Mr. Mayor, thank you. I have very brief comments, and that is only to say that I feel like we've had a really two productive meetings. I think we've had good discussion and have gotten into good details, but also kept it at a, at a high enough level that we've talked policy and philosophy, and we've just appreciated the, the back and forth dialogue, and we're looking forward to this evening to do more of the same. And so, with that, I will turn it over to Nick Hawkins, who will guide the process again this evening.
Okay, Nick.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. Can I quickly walk through the agenda, because this is actually a slightly revised version than the original that was sent out.
Does everyone have a copy of that, of the revised agenda that we received today? Okay.
So, it'll generally follow the format. We'll have a follow-up from Saturday's meeting, and in the packet with your agenda, you should have a supplement, a question and answer document. I'll walk through that in just a moment. But due to not getting through all the department budget presentations last night, we will be going through utilities, public works, and zoo presentations, and those will be sprinkled throughout the evening just to match up with some other presentations that we have. Our fund discussions will focus on the utilities funds, the parking fund, and we originally had the health fund discussion. We are proposing to move that into next week so that Jackie Russell, the human resources director, can be here to answer any questions on that. So, to supplement that, we've actually added a discussion on advanced life support, and we'll have a presentation from Chief Duke, which you should have that presentation in front of you as well. But I will start off with questions from the Saturday meeting, and I'll actually write off the back. The first one that you see is more information, more specific information on ALS. Again, that will be coming later in the evening, a presentation from Chief Duke, so I won't spend much time on that. If you're okay, I'll just go on to number two, since we'll have a more in-depth conversation on that later.
Are you all with us? We're on this particular document.
Just now.
He's getting to make the, wait a second, do we're all together on it? The first question, the first page is the, my LAS, and then the second page goes into the Q and A. And we're down to question two.
Yes, so question two on page two. It was requested that we provide you a list of the employees by fund, and so this is, if you go to page 213 in your budget book, that has total number of employees by department. What you see below on page two here is just a general list of employees by fund. So, the general fund is about a little over 75 percent of the, of the total FTE count, and then you go through, your utilities are going to be your second most, and then public works has our facilities, half cent, parking, and complete services. And, let's see, IT fund, and then neighborhood relations has the FTEs and the grant line.
Right, just a second here, we're still making sure we're getting it out. That's, that's it, is there? Yes, okay. We're together.
Are there any questions on the employees by fund? Again, that's on page two at the, at the bottom of the thing. Yes.
Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, question. Councilman Claire.
Can you, what's the grants fund and the ten positions? What is the grants fund, and then what are the ten positions?
Okay. So, the grants fund would be CDBG, I believe, and that is neighborhood relations. A miscellaneous grants fund would be, I think, one position in planning and two...
One in police department and two in planning.
Thank you.
Good, thank you. Other questions? James, ahead.
Okay, and we have also provided on, three was requested to list all the downtown and downtown grantees from the downtown redevelopment incentive program, as well as the Arts Connect grantees. Those can be found in appendix A and B. And that is a list for the downtown grants, I believe, a list the last three years of who's been awarded those grants, and for Arts Connect, I believe that's just 27, who's been awarded those for this year. And I, if you're okay, I'll move on to the, the next question.
Okay. Any questions? Yeah. Councilman Ortiz.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, did I, and I apologize for being late, but I, did I hear you say the parking fund? The, is, this fund is what we pay, how we pay our parking employees? Is that correct?
Yes, and we'll have a presentation on that shortly.
Now, she's clicking back at the number of employees.
Yes.
Okay, good.
I will move on to number four. Investment income from 2016. In 2016, we collected one point, close to 1.2 million dollars in interest, about 50,000 in dividends, and had realized losses of 13,000. Some of that is offset, and it's, again, sprinkled out through various funds throughout the city, and that's collected. We also have an offset in bank fees, and that averages about $11,000 a month, or $135,000 a year is what's offset from some of that interest, so it's not bank fees, it's just offset from that income.
Questions?
There was a question on, or request to provide a vehicle crash history for vehicle insurance that had gone up in the 2018 proposed budget, and how we budget for vehicle insurance is this combination of a three-year history of claims, as well as a premium that we pay to a third party. And that premium was about 113,000 for, estimated for 2018. The chart that you see on page three of the question and answer document shows just the three-year history by department on the total amount of claims that were, that were in each of those departments.
Number of questions.
All right.
Got that.
But the last thing I'll mention before we get into the department presentations is you also have a number of, it starts with a table of contents for the other funds. It was requested by a council member to provide that information, more detail on where you can find each one of the other funds by page number. So, you can use that, you can put that in your, in your budget book for future reference if you want to know where a specific fund is.
Councilman Claire.
I'm sorry, I wasn't listening. I do have a question on crash. So, fire had 61,000 claims?
$61,000 worth of claims.
Of claims. What I wanted to know was how, so how many crashes was that? I mean, how many? I, I'm trying to figure out why, okay, so in 14, so our insurance was 177,000, now it's 315, though?
Yeah, so how we budget is based on the amount of claims that we've had in the previous three years.
Why do we have so many claims?
Most of the accidents are just collision accidents, rear-ending, things like that. They're some, that's the, the number one type of...
Were rear-ending, rear-ending people?
It is a mix. You know, we pay for our own damage to our own vehicles, so that gets mixed in there. It's primarily someone hitting a city vehicle, or a city vehicle hitting another, hitting another vehicle.
Can you tell me, find out how many fire had, how many accidents, and how many planning, police, like, per accident, and not monetary value?
Yes.
Thank you, I'm sorry for not listening.
Any other questions there? And then you were saying about the list, the summary that we can put, the books?
Yeah, you have, should be four pages in front of you. The first one is a table of contents for the other funds. The next one are revised pages in the budget book. All of them pertaining to utilities. The first, we have some updated performance measure information for the utilities department. That is page, that is a, a supplement to page 26, or replacement for page 26. And then also, on the water fund detail pages, there was an, we reversed the formula for projecting fund balance, so we went through and corrected that. It originally showed that we were adding to fund balance in the water fund, we are actually spending into fund balance in the water fund. So, that is found on two different pages in your budget book, pages 115 and 171, and you have both of those pages that you can replace in. So, no errors.
Are we, are we together on it? Okay. Yeah, we get these different papers, and it's hard to follow sometimes which one you get together, which one you're talking about. Okay.
Just as a note, 115 is on the other side of this, we'll have, we'll have two in the book, so we'll have to scratch it out.
Can you send out an updated PDF? I can't insert these into my PDF.
Yeah, we can, and actually, I believe the website, the budget website has that correct.
Oh, I'll just go download it then, fabulous. Thank you.
Okay, that's the follow-up from the meetings and the new material.
Yes, so with that, we will move on to following up on the department presentation from last night. I don't believe that Brendan Sew is here, so we're gonna, Brendan Wiley from the Zoo will be presenting on his, but he's at another function right now, and we'll come after that. So, we will start with the utilities department, and Bob's going to be presenting.
So, we would go now to this book, to our budget book, no, to the material handed out last night, isn't it?
Well, actually, if...
So, we get together before we...
Yes, so I printed out the last three departments from last night. If you don't, if you didn't have a copy of your presentation from last night, so utilities...
The one that says public works.
It starts with public works, utilities is second on that.
All right.
We can follow along on that.
And then we also had the text handout, right?
Yes, I, well, I did not print out separate copies of that, but I can get this.
Okay, I think we're ready.
Okay, well, good evening. First of all, I'd like to make a couple of introductions. One thing I've learned over my many of years with the city is you've got to surround yourself with really good people if you're going to be successful. So, to my left is Nicole Malott. She's our business and customer service manager, and we also, out in the audience, we have Braxton Kopley, who is our deputy director of utility. There he is. Okay, so we'll start with my presentation on utilities, the very first slide.
Bob, could you pull your mic over more directly in front of you?
Sorry?
There you go, that's, yes, thank you.
Okay, so for the 2018 proposed budget, you can see a 2.2 percent increase. 1.5 percent of that increase is traditional operating expenses, meaning personnel costs, contractual commodities. The other 0.7 percent of that 2.2 percent is utility billing system and increases in debt service. And you can see that the FTE stay the same at 222 for utilities. All right? We'll go to the, we'll go to the next slide. I'm sorry, I have to keep remembering to speak into this thing. A sampling of key performance measures for utilities. We'll take the first one, feet of water mains replaced. This is our newest performance measure. Again, is a work in progress, but we have a target of 4,000, 40,000 feet of replacement of water main. That equates to eight miles and also a 100-year replacement cycle, if we could stay on track with that. The next two are tied, really tied to our stormwater permit. We revert the next two annually to KDHE as a part of our permit. First one being feet of stormwater sewer lines cleaned and inspected with a target of 70,000 feet. Next one is the number of stormwater inlets cleaned and inspected, 26,000 feet. And then attention to the last one, feet of wastewater sewer lines televised for inspection. This is something we've been measuring for a lot of years, but we ratcheted up the target to 150,000 feet. But beyond set of our asset management plan, we need to know the condition of our sewer lines, and one way to do that is to televise them. And that will give us good information to help us prioritize projects, but also give us good feedback on how well our line cleaning preventive maintenance program is, is working.
Question, you've had tremendous increases in all of these key performance measures, yet your staff has remained reasonably consistent, stable. So, how are you accomplishing these higher levels of performance?
We, as managers, are continually looking for efficiencies in the organization, better ways of doing things. With the very last one, the feet of wastewater sewer lines and televised for inspection, we actually reallocated resources and started up another crew so that we can, so that we can meet that target and maybe even go further than that. But it's, it's just a matter of prioritizing work and then making the appropriate job assignments.
Thank you. Good job.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, Councilman Jensen.
Thank you. So, how did you convince the city four guys to televise all this stuff?
Well, okay, I got you.
Appropriate response.
I might have just found another crew.
Well, at least they're qualified to operate some of that stuff.
Yeah, absolutely. If you haven't had the opportunity to watch this process in action, you really need to, and I certainly will invite you all at some time and show you how it works, it's really cool.
When you have time, and I certainly don't expect you to know this off the top of your head, could you tell us how many feet of water lines and sewer lines and that sort of thing we have in the city, just so we have the topping to compare to? I think it's fascinating that you've already got a, a cycle in mind on how to replace everything. Just, when you have a minute, if you would email that out, that would be fabulous.
Exactly, and I can tell you, we have approximately 970 miles...
Wow.
...of sewer wastewater line. We have 400 miles of stormwater line, and we have approximately 900 miles of water line. A huge set of infrastructure underneath the city of Topeka.
So, we're doing eight miles a year plus breaks, that's, we have a lot, a lot of work to do.
That is the target for 2018.
Sure.
That will be, that will be tough to continue, but that, we would take it one year at a time.
Well, and I appreciate you bringing this to light, because, you know, infrastructure is one of the most important things we, as the city government, do, and it's also one of the things we happen to be behind on. So, it's, it's good to take a look at this and set goals, and then try to figure out what we need to do to, to ramp up solving that, because if, if this system collapses, we're going to be in a world that we don't want to live in.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
And thank you for bringing that up.
Yeah, my pleasure.
Okay.
Sorry, Councilman, another question.
Bob, I, you talked about reallocating personnel and focusing on this. Was there something that you, you had to give up to do that, or was it truly an economy internally? Any answer being okay? I mean, we all know that we, we've got to address this and that it's been hard.
Right, yeah, I think we prioritize, and then we, we take those top priorities, and that's where we put our focus. So, sometimes, yes, you may, you may fall short somewhere a little bit, but I think that prioritization process must continue, must be a never-ending, continuing process. So, you're, set up your organization so you have the ability to move your staff.
I understand. I guess, you know, I've just, I ask that because we've gotten in some of the positions we're in now, because we, yeah, we reallocated people, but something else badly fell off, and so we weren't maybe even holding our own, and so I just was checking.
And, and I think we have to use all the tools that we have available to us, and I'm going to talk about one here in just a little bit, but also, sometimes we have to look at contracts to fill that gap in workload.
Okay.
But that's just one of the tools that we have.
Okay. Deputy Mayor Cohen.
Thank you, Mayor. Just like we have trouble with funding streets, are we, is, is the funding that you have, is it an acceptable number for us to maintain at least what we have, or get on top of the replacing? You know what I mean?
Yes, and, and when we went through the capital improvement plan process, we talked a little bit, and we had to make some assumptions so that we could do the plan, rather than some type of a rate increase. So, and even with, as we went through that process, we were still 112 million dollars short of a five-year capital improvement plan of doing everything we really need to be doing.
Need to be doing.
Now, interim city manager.
Bob is being, he's finessing that answer quite a bit. The very direct answer is no. Our rates are artificially low, and it's something we have to address. There's some tough choices coming.
Councilwoman Clear.
On the, inlets cleaned and inspected, is that what I'm thinking of, the inlets?
Correct, in, in the curve.
Okay, why did it go down? Did we lose some, or, it went like from 27 to 24 to 26 to 26? How many do we have?
We have 20,000.
And you cleaned 26?
We're, we're projected to clean 26,000.
Does that mean you're doing the 20,000? How do you do that if we only have 20,000?
To clean them several times.
So, you're going to clean them one time, and then a few of them, 6,000 the second time?
Exactly. Some, we have some inlets out there that plug up quicker than others, need more attention.
Okay.
The ones in older neighborhoods with lots of leaves.
Leaves, yeah.
Yeah.
Exactly.
Yeah, Councilman Ortiz.
Yes, thank you.
Bob, you mentioned the lady next to you, what was her name again?
Nicole Malott.
And her position again?
She is business and customer service manager for utilities.
What does that entail?
She's, she's in charge of all of our billing, any business services, plus our customer service staff at the water department, the water division.
Is that the, oh, out there at the plant, the call center?
Yes, Huffle McVicker at the, at the water plant.
Okay, and that, and that was my question, that's what I was wondering if she, she was in charge of the, of the call center. What exactly does the call center do? Besides answering the phone, I, I get that.
That's a, that's a big, big part of what they do, is answer the phone. We get calls for lots of different things. People calling in wanting to make payments, people calling in with problems of many kinds, problems with their water, dirty problems with their sewer. We get calls on, we get calls, calls on just about everything, and so...
So, you guys get the customer complaints as well?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah, it's 311 is the call that goes into the call center.
368-3111.
Right.
That's out there for.
Oh, that's the call center number?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep.
Thank you.
All right. Okay, go ahead, to your highlights.
Okay, can you hear me through this thing?
Yes, yeah.
Okay, department highlights. I've had the wonderful opportunity to work a year and a half with the water division, and I set a goal to, to look and identify those things that were doing very well, but also those things that we can improve upon. And I've got, come up with three issues. The first, the first one is a lack of preventive maintenance on our fire hydrants. The second one is a lack of maintenance on our valves and our, in our water distribution system. And then the third one is we were missing utility locates. So, with limited resources, I made a decision to contract out utility locates and then, and redistribute manpower to re-implement these very important preventive maintenance programs. Just like we changed the oil in our car, we need to be doing preventive maintenance on our assets. It, it really determines the longevity and how long we're really going to get out of our assets. Also, we're migrating the city's utility billing system from the old antiquated AS400 system into a Windows-based, user-friendly platform. We're implementing an outbound dialing system that will computer, that will computer generate phone calls to our customers, letting them know they have a bill due prior to shut-off. It certainly has a customer service aspect to it. But also, though, if, if we can cut down on the number of shut-offs we do, it also has an efficiency gained inside the org, our organization. And last but not least is our large meter testing and replacement program, where we focus on our meters over three inches in size. We have approximately 216 in service, and we have a goal to test and/or replace 35 per year, and this will ensure that we're giving our customers accurate billing information.
Councilman Ortiz.
Now, Bob, you, you, you are all right, but what about the callback? Will that include the callback and the automation?
Yep. We'll still, we'll still do everything we're doing. This will be in addition to...
But what about the callback? You know, I can call KPNL, and if, you know, they'll say to plug in your number, and we'll call you back. I can't do that with the city of Topeka.
Oh, okay.
And, and I've asked about that, and they're like, oh, we can't do that. Will that include that?
Well, it's a great question, and I don't know the answer to it, but I, if you'd allow me to ask my business manager...
Can you please ask your business manager?
I can tell you that that's something that we have been looking at. We've been having, we've been having technical issues with it. We, we implemented...
We, we implemented originally and found that it wasn't working appropriately. People were leaving their numbers and not getting a callback. So we're continuing to work out those technical issues, but it's something that we hope to re-implement again.
Okay. Now, and my next thing is, I'm not as savvy as, you know, Mr. Jensen, that I don't like to get on and leave all my card information. I still have a checkbook, which he knows nothing about, but, you know, with West Star, I can call 24 hours a day and give him my information and boom, there it is. I can't do that with the city of Topeka. I have to wait for a live person, which if you go through the prompts, it's hard to figure out which is the live person until you start pressing all those numbers and they're like, just a minute, we'll get you somebody. And that needs to be more clear. And, and, and I would like to see us do that so we can do that 24/7. I think that would help the shut-off, including mine, when I can do it at midnight because I have a budget meeting and I'm not going to get there till midnight. These are just things that are user-friendly to me, you know? And that's how I pay a lot, a lot of my bills, by check by phone, so I, I like it. I like it. And, but, but I noticed we just haven't been able to do that. So will that help?
Well, point well taken. With the implementation of the new utility billing software, it'll be much more customer-friendly. They'll, they'll have more options on how they pay their bill. And we'll take note on your feedback as we, as we implement this process.
And last but not least, they used to have an email where you could, they would email you a receipt and they've cut that out as well. So that was very helpful as well. Because my mind, I couldn't remember if I paid it or not, but I could go search my email and find it, but, and they don't have that. I, I think that's, that's helpful.
Okay.
All right.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I won't request anything.
All right. Your, Councilman Emerson, your request.
Yes, yes, Mr. Mayor. No request, I'm fine with that actually, because you can go on there and use credit cards, I'm fairly certain. Sorry. You give me cash and I'll pick it up. Would you mind speaking about the, we had a gentleman in my neighborhood yesterday and he was in like a, a van and I thought he was probably a remote meter reader. I went up and spoke to him. And turns out, your new system, they had a spike and flow from one meter and he came out and thought maybe, they maybe had a leak. And I thought that was a fantastic service. It's not just for you guys to collect data, it's also to serve. Would you mind just briefly just talking about your meter replacement program and these automated, I don't know what it's called?
Yes. Oh, thank, thank you for bringing that up, because I tried to squeeze everything into five minutes and I wanted to talk about this. Thank you, Councilman Emerson. Yes, we're, we are going, we're in the process of implementing what's called an AMI system for our meters. That means Automated Metering Infrastructure. We currently have an AMR system, which means Automated Meter Reading. So, so what that means, the system we have right now, we don't have to go out and physically take the manhole lid off and physically read the meter. We can drive by and we have equipment that actually reads it for us. But an AMI system, infrastructure system consists of towers and then special meters with devices that will send signals through those, those towers and will be able to read meters remotely from one place. And what, what that will do is, number one, help with our staffing levels, but number two, it gives us instantaneous information. And we can take that information and, and citizens will even be able to, at some point, and this is a ways away, be able to have instant readings of what's happening with their meter. But we can also then identify a leak immediately with this type of system. Right now, we're, we're about 20% AMI. We're looking at probably a five-year period before we can get fully implemented. But that's really a cool system that's really going to really help us out. Identify leaks quick, but also give our customers instantaneous feedback on what's happening with their meter.
That, your question?
Yes, thank you.
Councilman Jensen?
Thank you. Just a quick follow-up on the, the phone call center question. How long is our average hold time? Is it long enough to warrant needing a dial-back system? The few times I've called, mostly because I don't use checks or phones anymore, the few times I've had to call because I couldn't get on the website and pay my bill, I've only waited mere moments to talk to a human, once I got through the IVR, of course.
Callback is how much? What's, 40 seconds? Yeah, the, the callback time averages under 40 seconds right now.
It would take me long.
Oh, okay.
Okay, that's it, it'd take me long to enter my phone number. I could text it faster, but.
Any other questions on the, yes, then?
I have a number of questions. On the water fund, under materials and supplies, there's an increase of 224,000.
That's, that's associated to water main break repairs.
So you're expecting that much? I mean.
That's, that's a projected number.
How, how do you project how your water main, I mean, this is up, it was only up 100,000 and now it's jumping up like 225,000?
Yeah, and, and water main breaks differ from year to year. A lot of it's dependent on, on weather. So that's, basically, we have historical data, it's how we make those projections.
I mean, it just didn't follow any kind of logic.
Right.
So you're just kind of guessing?
Yep, it really is a guess.
Okay.
Like, last year, this time, we had like 140 breaks approximately. This year, we're down to 119, I believe. But that could really shoot up. We could, they can vary from year to year a lot.
Okay. And on the administrative costs, they're up 168,000?
Administrative costs.
What's administrative cost?
That's an allocation from our utilities admin account. We have added that utilities locate contract to our admin and then we allocate that out to each of the funds, since it affects both, or all three water, wastewater and storm water. Because that contract was added to the utilities admin, it greatly increased the admin costs that were allocated out to each fund. You'll see corresponding numbers on that five, was it 59?
55901.
Yeah. On, on all three of the funds, their number there has increased because of that contract that got added to the utilities admin.
Why did the contract get added to utilities admin?
It's the contract that we just contracted out. It, prior to that was done in-house and there were, basically, there was a journal entry done each month to transfer costs to the other funds. This is just a quicker, cleaner way to do it, other than doing it through the invoicing process.
Okay, I'll believe you. On the wastewater fund, the other purchase services is 208, went up by 208. What's the other purchase services? Or why did it go up 208? Second page, 121.
That is associated with our biosolids hauling. That is a byproduct of the wastewater treatment product, process. And it has gotten kind of backlog and we have too much on-site, so we, both in '17 and '18, are hiring additional help to get those biosolids off-site.
So this may not be a long-term expense?
Correct.
And that's an example of having work that needs to be done, that's not going to happen all the time, that you look, you look to the outside to get some help with.
Okay. Chemicals? Did our chemicals go up 313,000?
No, we just transferred it from the line right below it. You'll see it went down. We were using.
So you just moved it?
Yeah, we were just, we were using two different lines to budget for it and we consolidated it to one line.
Ah, okay. And other costs went up by 762. What are the other costs?
The other costs are our estimated, anticipated future debt service costs, the debt service lines for debt service principal and debt service interest. That is specifically related to the schedules that we have. However, we will have another debt service issue towards the end of '17 and we have to estimate for what the costs are going to be associated with that next year.
Okay, thank you.
Councilman Hiller.
On the biosolids, since you mentioned it, I mean, in the past, if I, if I recall correctly, those we don't need, but they're very attractive for fertilizing and so on. And we have just voluntarily delivered it for little or nothing. Is that correct in the past?
That is correct. We've done for nothing, but I believe we're, we're capturing just a very little bit.
If we've got a backlog, whether it's just one time or, you know, a continual program, can't we sell it and have people come pick up their own or at least pay for us to bring it to them?
I, we, we are actually in the process of, of, of a study right now to do more with our biosolids program. It's a part of our solids handling program at Water Police Control over at the Oakland Plant. So we're going to be doing some really cool things and I, I can't give you a lot of specifics right now, but it's going to, we're going to be doing more with the gas that we, that we make from the digestion of those biosolids. And then we're going to do some things that are much more efficient with the disposal of those biosolids.
Well, and I recall conversations about that when I was first elected and you briefed us on what cool things you were doing. And so that, that's actually how I knew as, as much as I do, but, so is that then hopefully going to generate some programming whereby we won't have that expense in 2018?
I don't know if it'll off, I don't know if it'll offset the cost completely. It'll certainly cut into it quite a bit.
Okay.
I don't know at this point what, what kind of cost we, we can cut into, but we certainly will become more efficient.
Okay, I had one other question if I might.
Go ahead.
Yesterday, or whenever it was that we had our last presentations, the IT department said that they were working on a single payment portal across the entire enterprise. You were talking about redoing your billing system. Are those the same? Is that single payment portal include you?
Yes, that will include us as well.
Good, thank you. Good, just checking.
Yeah.
Other questions? Completes? Utilities? All right. Thank you. Parting, a parting comment?
Well, if you want me to be done, I can be done. Otherwise, I would like to talk with you a little bit about projections, but I know you've got business.
Okay, all right, sure. I didn't, I didn't know. Go ahead, yes, do so.
Are you sure that, okay, okay. So it's kind of, I guess it's kind of a segue into the discussion. We've kind of had the discussion some, but I just wanted to give you a little bit of information. The utility fund is a combined fund. It's made up of water utility, which is about a $35 million budget, the wastewater utility, which is 27 million, and then the storm water utility, which is 8 million. So if I could walk you through some projections real quick, we'll go through it pretty quick. If you could turn to page 115, under water. Got it? It should be the new page.
Got it.
Oh, the new page. Okay, I wanted to focus on the beginning cash balance. You can see, this is approximately 14 million dollars. We anticipate using about 1.4 million dollars. That will leave us an ending cash balance of 12.1 million. Okay? Let's, let's go to storm water, page 118. You'll see a beginning cash balance of 4.9. We anticipate using about 1.3 and that leaves the ending cash balance of 3.6. Go to wastewater on page 120. Beginning cash balance of 9 million. We're anticipating a slight increase of 921,000 with an ending cash balance of 10 million. So that, if you combine these as a combined fund, it comes up to approximately 26 million dollars. And now that may seem like a lot of money, but it's really right where we need to be. And to put that into perspective, our 2018, our total debt payments will total 17,000, 17.5 million, which is why we need to maintain that 26 million to comply with the requirements of the bond covenants, as well as the city's debt management policy. Very important.
Yeah, and I, and I, the, the reason you're stating this is that sometimes someone says we have these funds that are laying around and the reason we have them is for these payments that come due periodically. Is that?
Exactly.
And I don't, does someone in finance want to comment along that line?
Mr. Mayor, not only that, but we're just simply in some cases required to have this kind of, by our bond covenants or whatever agreements we might have, we're, we're literally required to have that amount of cash liquid.
By whom? Who requires that?
There are the agreements that we have with, with the bondholders.
Councilman Schwartz.
Thank you so much. This, this is the first, three years ago, I asked these questions and I never did understand what was going on with all the millions that were held in the balance. And what I understand now, we have a debt of 17.45 million and we hold 26 million in the balance so that if we needed to, we would have it to cover the debt. Is that, I mean, is that the short answer?
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
Yes.
I can clarify that with anybody that tells me we have a lot of money sitting around doing nothing.
Good, yeah, good point.
Just to, just to clarify that, we owe 17 million. We will have to pay 17 million this year, right?
17 million at debt service.
That's a good clarification, council member. We have significantly more in total debt than that. It's in the hundreds of millions. They probably have the exact number, but that's just a debt service payment on a year-to-year basis.
Thank you.
Good information. Now, thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you for letting me do that, I appreciate it.
Utilities, going, gone. Thank you very much. Good presentation. And I don't think our zookeeper has arrived.
So we'll move on to Public Works and Jay Sette.
So we're going to talk about Public Works for our presentation and I wanted to start off just by, we talk a lot about streets for Public Works, so I kind of want to cover what that includes.
Can you pull your mic closer? These aren't quite as strong as they could be there. That's good.
Okay. Is that better?
Yes.
Okay, so within Public Works, there are six major divisions. The first division within Public Works is our, what we call our Transportation Operations Division. This is a true workforce that the public sees. This includes our equipment operators that are out there working in the streets. It includes our traffic operations folks that maintains our signal signs and markings and also the forestry division that's responsible for trees in the right-of-way as well as some other services. Second major division within Public Works is our Engineering Group. They manage the majority of the CIP projects for the department as well as in-house survey activities, right-of-way acquisition and development permitting. Third, within that, in the Public Works portfolio, is our Parking Division. This is actually an enterprise fund that's sustained from the revenue it collects and they maintain the, the downtown parking facilities, garages, surface lots, as well as the on-street meter spaces. And then we have three other divisions that represent what we call Internal Service Funds. These are divisions that provide services to other units of the government. These are divisions that provide services to other units of the government. That includes our Fleet Division, they maintain the entire government fleet, so basically the city vehicles you see around, but that also includes the heavy equipment, as well as the fire apparatus, and the police fleet is all maintained by Public Works. The second Internal Service Division we have is Facilities. They're responsible for the maintenance and upkeep of over 100 buildings that the city owns. I mean, the big ones we think about are LEC, City Hall, and Holiday, but that also includes maintenance of the zoo facilities, as well as the other buildings that we have throughout the city. And then, the last division within Public Works is what we call the Technical Support Group. This is, they're responsible for a lot of the applications, software, and workflow processes that the different departments have across the government. They administer some of the backend, the C Click Fix, our City Works software system, which is our primary work order system. They also help with implementation of new applications across the government, like the online permitting and plan review service. We're working with planning to help implement that through our City Works system, so a number of different things. So, that's a brief overview of all the different things included within this Public Works budget. What you see from your slide is we have a 32.6% increase this year over previous years. That's comprised by the $2 million add to the General Fund and Motor Fuel Fund, and then the balance is made up through the projected cash balance forecast within the half-cent sales tax for 2018. We have two additional positions requested to be added to the budget this year, and I'll kinda cover those in my highlights section. So, we'll move on to the Performance Measures, and I kinda wanna walk through a couple of different things. We talked a lot of different services, so I've got a mixture here. The first two, because streets and fixing potholes is always on people's minds, I wanted to kinda compare two measures that we have here. The first one is the number of tons of asphalt we place every year. This is a measure that we really don't want to see increasing. We are increasing productivity, but as we've talked about pavement management, if we're increasing potholes, that means we're not, we're not taking care of the streets. So, we are increasing productivity on this issue, but it's more of a measure of our streets getting worse, as opposed to our streets getting better, is one way to think of it. The second reflects the $2 million add to the budget this year, and this is a new, it's new dollars into the General Fund, so we've kinda listed that as a separate performance measure, but this is basically saying, if that $2 million were added into the General Fund, the goal would be rehabilitation on six lane miles of streets with that $2 million. And so, as we continue with the development of the pavement management program, we wanna move to these more performance-based, what are we doing to kinda maintain the system as opposed to indicators of the poorness of our system? So, just wanted to share those with you. Two other topics that I know came up last year during budget discussion was street sweeping. You may have seen, we actually acquired two new street sweepers this year that have been active out in service. Our goal within the department is four sweeps on all the streets throughout the city, which basically equates about 5,500 miles of streets, and we're wrapping up that first round of sweeping. The other question you've had is about how do we better notify folks of when we're gonna be there so they can move cars? We've been working with IT and some other folks to basically work through Next Door to get that notice out on a regular basis of when we're gonna be on your street is a better way to actively communicate, and that should be coming into play here in the next couple of weeks. The next measure is linear miles of aggregate alleys. We have a combination of paved alleys and gravel alleys, so this is what we measure for aggregate alleys, and so, the goal of there is to hit 75% of those alleys, the gravel alleys, on an annual basis. You know, some of those are in worse condition than others, so we kinda have a system going through and prioritizing those. The last two measures on there are a contrast on our Parking Fund, and I just wanted to highlight kinda the difference there. The first one is the number of stalls we have leased in our garages. 85% to 90% is a good measure of occupancy, so you can see we're pretty full within the garages with our lease rates, and then, in contrast, the surface lots that we maintain, you see we only have about a 35% lease rate, so we have a lot of open spaces in our surface lots. And we're gonna talk in detail about parking, and I'll kinda get into some of those dynamics on that. Move on to our highlights section, and a couple of things I wanted to highlight was, within the Engineering and Streets Fund, so there was 1.25 million added into the Engineering Budget for that pavement rehabilitation. The balance of that, $750,000, was added into the Motor Fuel Fund out of the Fund Reserve, and so, that was the, you know, to fill that gap in our pavement management, we talked about that, looking at the long-term forecast, so that's what's in there. The other two things that are going on is, we, working with Brian Faust, our new city engineer, we've been looking at the Engineering Department, as well as other Public Works, to organize around what we call Asset Management, which is the practice we're putting into place for pavement. We have 15 other asset categories, if you think about within Public Works, our traffic signals, our bridges, our signs, so it's building that same approach. What level of service do we want those assets to be? What's the condition? How does that tie back to budget? And so, we're looking at our organization to better fit that model. We have requested and recommending an additional project manager or project engineer in the 2018 budget, and the reason for that is, we have about 130 active projects. That could be projects that are in the concept phase of design, all the way to construction and completion, and when you look at our engineering staff, this additional position will make that about an average of 15 projects per project engineer. You just put that in terms of, say, a 40-hour work week, not that they don't work more than that, but that's about 30 hours a week that's, you know, would be consumed by project time. So, we think this additional position will help us better deliver the number of projects we have going on across the board, that it's not just CIP, it's developer projects and other things that we have going on. Within our facilities, I just wanna reemphasize the Asset Management piece. Vince Sheets and his staff have been working to proactively go through our buildings, identifying the mechanical, electrical, plumbing, all the pieces that make a building work. What's the preventative maintenance schedule for that? What's the repair schedules we need? And so, they've completed LEC, Holiday, and City Hall, and they're moving out to the zoo with the 18 buildings there over the next year to kinda develop that same plan. We also have worked in partnership with the zoo, and have the other position added to Public Works is an additional maintenance worker to be dedicated to the zoo. That's to fill some of the gap in maintenance needs. They're a different animal, in literally speaking. In the sense that, you know, with the accreditation process that the zoo has to go to, there's a higher level of care and a lot more detailed orientation on maintenance. That's a little bit beyond what we're currently providing with our current staff, we're doing the best we can to keep up, but think this position will help us meet that. And then, just to kinda highlight parking, we had the kickoff meeting yesterday with the Steering Committee to work on a downtown parking plan, so that's gonna, looking at implementation in 2018, and we've put some money in the budget that we'll talk about as we move into the Parking Fund discussion. And then, just reemphasizing about the disparity in parking supply and demand. We have a lot of use in the garages, not a lot of use in the surface lots. If you look at the on-street parking and just kinda drive around downtown, Kansas Avenue and the side streets may be full, but a block off those, you know, it may be easy to find a space, or depending on time of day, so lots of discussion there. And so, that's a brief overview of Public Works, and would stand for any questions that you have.
I just, on the project engineer, so, this is, this is helpful of having the projects ready to go when the season opens, in other words, so that when April rolls around, we're ready to start all of our street projects, is that, because I know that's been an issue, that we haven't had them always ready, but would that help that type of problem?
Yes, sir. So, what it'd say is, I mean, it's the project load, I mean, you know, when you have people that are carrying more projects than they can give attention to in the needed week, I mean, you think about it, these folks, I mean, they're engineers, but they're talking to the customers, the constituents, as we have construction going on, they're working with the contractors, or if it's a consultant design project, that design engineer, they do a lot of coordination work with not only our internal utilities, but our external utility partners, permitting that we may have, whether it be environmental, or working with KDOT if we're getting near one of their facilities. And so, there's a lot of detail stuff that goes on that kinda just, what we feel justifies that need to have an additional position to better manage and deliver the projects.
Councilwoman Deesla.
Thank you, Mayor, well, guess, Jason, I, just sitting here, listening to everything that you're saying, it's just impressive, just the whole attention to detail that we're having at all of these different aspects of our maintenance for our roads, the maintenance for the properties, and just piggybacking a little bit on the properties, you did mention the zoo, you mentioned the LEC, but my question is, are the firehouses also under your jurisdiction?
So, yes, I did not cover those, but the upkeep with fire, I mean, we provide maintenance, as well as help administer the capital improvement programs. You may recall with the CIP, we approved a specific project to look at renovating a firehouse on an annual basis to meet the needs of the current fire service. So, we work and partner with the chief and the Fire Department on that.
Thank you, 'cause one of the things that I had been doing in the last two years was making sure that I visit all the firehouses, and there's some houses that, I mean, walk into the basement, that's all I'm gonna say. It was just, we, there's some deferred maintenance, and I'm excited to hear that these things are being considered. Thank you.
You're welcome. Councilwoman Jensen.
Thank you. Appreciate your presentation. I'm a tiny bit nervous about 90% of our parking stalls being leased in downtown. Where are the customers going to park if all of the parking stalls are occupied? I realize you're fairly early on in the plan, so I don't have a whole lot of concern about that yet, and I know there's a bunch of people on that team that are very familiar and intimately aware of that issue, but that's my only real concern, is if we're only saving 10% for guests and customer parking in those garages, is that going to be sufficient for what we all expect downtown to be in the very near future?
And I'll get into that a little bit more detail when we get into the Parking Fund, and maybe clarify some of that for you.
Thank you.
Okay. Councilwoman Schwartz.
And that may be, thank you, Your Honor, that may be coming up, the questions I need to ask about parking, but first, I wanted to say thank you so much, Jason, for, I thought we scored big with Doug Whitaker, and you have really surpassed all the expectations with utility. Jason came out to my district personally to look at some streets and stuff, and I just really think he's doing a great job.
You're getting special attention, is this? Other councilmembers, I assume he's available to your district.
Put in a request, he'll come out to your districts too. Well, my question has to do with the downtown parking, and we, in the TGT Committee, we decided not to take pocket, the pocket park maintenance funding out of the TGT Fund, so, you know, I think we're discussing in the budget process, where could that possibly be taken from? And so, I guess my question is, have we raised parking fees? I worked downtown for a number of years, 12 years probably, and didn't mind paying for parking, because it was, it guaranteed me a place to, you know, walk from my car. So, my question is, have we raised fees for parking? I know the state lot, when I worked at 503 in the New England Building, I thought it was a city lot that the state then, you know, you paid the state for parking, but how is that working with the parking downtown? I really would like to see our customers not have to pay parking when they go in stores, but if you're gonna work downtown, I think you should be paying for parking.
Yeah, so, I believe 2013 was the last time we had an increase to parking rates, I'd need to double-check and make sure on that. And, you know, that's one of the questions in the entire study. I mean, there are many components, right now, we're in what we're calling the data gathering phase. We are listening to individuals, what do they see are the issues? Is it that they think parking, we're charging too much for some of the places? Parking not near enough to where they need to be? The balance of supply and demand, the kinda technical part of that data, what do we see development-wise happening versus the supply? And do we have supply near enough? Or if we don't, how do we facilitate making use of the supply we do have? I mean, one of the conversations that came up was about shuttle service or trolley to some of these surface lots to get over the barriers to walking. I mean, a lot of times, if you just look at supply and demand, the answer is, we've got a walking problem, not a parking supply problem, but there's a customer perception issue. We want downtown to be inviting, we want people to be able to easily find parking, so there's a wayfinding component. We're working with Bill on the wayfinding recommendations to go ahead and start implementing some of that for parking, so that we're prepared for that growth and development coming. So, a lot of these questions are gonna come up during that study, and we'll have some better recommendations for you as we move through that process.
Assistant Manager.
The other thing I might add is that, as we look at parking contracts, when folks come to us for large space contracts, we're trying to do a more effective job of charging a market rate for those spaces instead of deeply slashed discounts. When we opened the parking meeting yesterday, I encouraged everyone and reminded them that parking is a commodity, it's like our utilities, it's as valuable to all of our, all the businesses and what we're, what we have downtown as electricity and water and everything else, and we need to make sure we're charging appropriate, but still encouraging activities to take place.
Are you, if I may follow up, most of the meters still have hoods over them. We're done with downtown construction, if, I've been through there several times, and I think it looks like it's completed. Are we gonna take the hoods off and start charging again, or when's that gonna happen?
At this point, we're going to leave the hoods on as we work through the parking study. That was one of, the other comment I think we heard loud and clear at that kickoff meeting is, we love the hooded parking, it was very important to the, you know, small retail business owners that, that we not charge for parking in those areas, because they think that's viable. And so, I mean, the consultant we have, there's lots of different ways to pay for parking. I mean, it's not just through the meter fee, so I think that's one of the things we'll have to look at, if that's the desire to kinda keep the on-street parking free, how do, how do we cover our costs?
Thank you.
Deputy Mayor Cohen.
Thank you, Mayor. I had a question about the meters along the east side of I-70. There's just, from 10th Street all the way to Hallmark, there's just meters there, and all those spaces are always empty. And, you know, why don't we, I mean, will the Review Committee be looking at that? And, 'cause you'd think that maybe the working people downtown would park there and walk across the bridge.
Yes, sir. As I understand, the reason those meters were put up prior was to force people to park in the downtown core, because there was some concern that if we had free spaces across the interstate, then we would be losing revenue, so you basically metered those to force people. I mean, parking's an economic incentive, I mean, people are gonna pay what they think it's worth, but maybe now the reverse is true, maybe we can reduce some of that demand on the garages, opening it up for other development, if we start making some of that outer less costly. So, if we, let's just say hypothetically, increase garage prices, maybe the offset is some of that out-of-the-way parking is either free or less costly, or has some barrier, eliminates the barriers to the walking, trolley, what have you. But ultimately, there's a cost associated with it and figuring out who pays it.
Councilwoman Claire.
I wanna thank you too, for all of the information over the last year on all the departments. I can answer questions more knowledgeably. The only thing I don't quite understand yet is forestry. I'm not sure what they do and where they do it, besides cut my tree down. But I see you added a position there? Or it was nine, and now it's 10?
Let me look at that, because we've not added a position in forestry.
There's two. There's two, three, one.
On the sheet in the back, it looks like we're up one.
Yeah, on page 92 of the. Older new.
Oh.
Councilwoman, why don't we put that as one of our follow-up questions, because there's no intent to add a position in forestry this year?
Yeah, I'll look at, I mean, what, what we have, we've had some turnover within forestry, and so we've had some transition of our more senior arborists leaving and having some new, but we'll get the exact number.
Sometime, can you give us a program report on what they do and where?
Absolutely.
I get a lot, I think 50% of my calls from constituents have something to do with forestry, and I really don't have much information to give them.
You wanna give a short right now, what does forestry do?
Sure. We take care of trees in the right of way. That's our primary duty, is taking care of public trees. And what that includes is not only preventive maintenance. So these are arborists, they know about trees. So they're out there pruning, ensuring that we have healthy, thriving trees. They also are debris removal when we have windstorms and things like that from public trees, okay? We have one of our trees fall, they're out there taking it down. Some of the other things that they do, they actually help administer the Mount Auburn Cemetery. So, and there's some miscellaneous services that they do, the weed pre-emergence on our medians. They are responsible for some of the landscaping in the downtown area, not the 6th to 10th block, but others. And the short answer is, forestry is a hybrid from the Parks and Rec merger. They've kind of been leftover assigned to Public Works, and it's one of the areas I've been, is on my list to look at, how do we better do that? So that's a short kind of overview, but we can give you more detail later.
Sure.
But doesn't the city contract out a lot of these services also?
So we do employ contractors sometimes to assist us with the, some of the tree maintenance if we have a need. So, I mean, they have that capability within their budget, or their budget. But, you know, they are primarily a workforce. I mean, you think about, these are arborists, we have grapple truck, we have a chipper truck. You may see them out there climbing trees, taking them down. And then depending on, some of the tree work you may see in the right of way may be associated with West Star or the utilities and their contractors coming through trimming lines. So that may not be the city paying for that contractor, but West Star paying for the contractor to keep limbs off their lines. So there's kind of a mixture of stuff going on.
Okay, that helps. Thanks.
Okay, Councilman Jensen.
Thank you. I have two quick questions. One about forestry. I know, or at least I've been told, that we are several years behind in planting trees to catch up from what we've had to cut down. Is that something that we're planning to reengage in the near future? Is that sort of pending your review of forestry?
Moving into the 2017 budget, we moved money out of the transfer, or the administration budget within Public Works into forestry, so that they could actually start doing that. And then we've been looking at, is there a way that, you know, we can augment that with additional funding to, you know, trees don't last forever, but they're very important to a city, so we need to plan for them like any other asset.
And we have some beautiful trees, thanks to our folks in the past. One other quick follow-up on parking. When you look at costs, is there some consideration for folks that have jobs that are on the lower end of the pay scale, you know, minimum wage up to $10, maybe $12 an hour? A lot of those folks are gonna struggle to afford to pay to park downtown, and a lot of their employers are not gonna cover those costs for them. Again, I don't need an answer now, but as you work through with that team, another thing to be cognizant of is some of those folks, that's, I mean, that cuts up nearly a third of their salary in some cases.
Right.
Councilwoman Ortiz.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have been talking about parking for the last three years. I talked to Mr. Coulson. I've talked to interim manager Doug Gerber. There's a lot in parking that we need to look at. There's a lot of changes that we need to make. The hooded meters don't bother me, and I'll tell you why, Elaine, is because they're only for two hours. And you can only park downtown for two hours. Now Coulson was, City Manager Coulson was surprised because he said, no, you can park downtown for longer than two hours. You just gotta move your car.
Two hours a day?
Two hours, that's all you get. You move your car, you still get a ticket. And I think there's a lot that we need to look at. I would have liked to have been known about that meeting today. It would have been interesting, because I have a lot that I'm gonna write up and, and present to everybody. You know, we encourage, we've done all this work downtown, and we encourage our residents to move downtown. And, and they get treated like stepchildren. Two parades I've been to, and I've heard to two different gentlemen, elderly gentlemen that have said, they tell me to move my car. I've got this oxygen tank, and I think that residents, there's no parking in the alleys, there's no parking in the front. And when we're telling them to clear the streets for our parades and stuff, I think they should have unlimited parking. And how we do that, they have, they can take, take their leases in and get a parking permit that allows them to do that. Because they're down there all the time when we're not down there. And they're down there when it's busy, and I think we just need to make sure that, that will give us a way to, to notify them as well that we're gonna have this event, we might need you. But right there at 9th and Madison Avenue, at the Kansas and Towers, there's a lot of elderly people there. And they're like, well, yeah, they told me, this one gentleman, he talked to me, he said, they told me that I can go park in the garage, but it's a lot for me to do that. He's on a fixed income. That's why they live there, you know? So I think these are just things that we need to look at. But parking, parking's a mess. I've talked to Doug about it. I've talked to Coulson about it. And I don't, you know, oh, yeah, we'll get to it. Yeah, we need to really get to it. So I'm glad to hear that there was some type of, of meeting. We need to look at the tickets that are being excused, that shouldn't be excused. There's a lot of things, because we have put a lot of money in to those little handhelds that the police officers have to make it more efficient. And I don't see us getting our bang for our buck. And I'd like to see that. But, and I, and I think if the policymaker is not gonna change some of the rules, then I'd be willing to set up something to make sure that we did that change, because it's really bad over there. It's really, it's really terrible. As far as raising the prices, I think it's just too, too high right now. I hear that a lot, how, how it's doubled. I will say, I've also heard some good things. You know, I have an attorney that said that he got a courtesy of not to pay there, because we also had attorneys that would come, and they just, they figured out how, how much it would cost him to park there while they were in, in court. And they would just let it go. And then guess what? They knew we weren't gonna come, they weren't gonna be successful at coming after us, because we're not, it just goes to collection. So we've had, I've had some attorneys that say, wow, I got a freebie that said this is a warning and just a courtesy. And I think that's neat, but I just think we need to really, really look at that from the top to the bottom. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And Jason, I look forward to looking at that with you.
And I think those would be some of the issues, like the people now living in lofts downtown, that the new parking study, or this study will look at, how we can accommodate, or how other cities do this, that we have that. And I like that with a group coming in, they can be objective. Give us their, what other cities, how they handle things, give us some new information. Anything else on the parking fund? Councilwoman Hiller?
Well, I, well, I think they're still gonna get back to the parking, so unless we're, we're done. I just really appreciate that you're on it. I, too, talked about residents, but in a different I asked, because I've been really encouraging this for years. I wasn't in the meeting. They are gonna have a survey that's gonna be out soon, if it's not already out. And we need to encourage everybody we know that has thoughts on it, either that lives downtown or that doesn't, to input into that survey, because they're, they're gonna be interested. I had a couple of questions regarding Public Works overall, and they tie in with some of the others. Where were you proposing to add someone to the zoo? And the question just came up about the fire stations as well. If our central facilities guys do that, are those billed out to the departments interdepartmentally? Are they billed?
Yeah, the facilities is what we call an internal service fund.
Right.
So every year, we look at the cost incurred with that fund and provide an estimate of finance to charge back to the different departments.
So this extra person that you're proposing to have for the zoo would actually be assigned to your department, but their, the funding would be billed to the zoo?
Through the internal service fund, yes.
Okay. Just as we're watching cost control, something I said briefly before, and I guess we're gonna get to the zoo today, is I do think, you know, that the streets are, and the utilities are essential for us. And so I wanna make sure, I personally wanna make sure we've got enough money for those things. And if we need to sort of cap how much the zoo could have, then I think that that's something we can look at in terms of cost containment. I, too, had asked questions in my one-on-one about forestry, just for a little other framework. That forestry was at nine when we cut the staff back in 2010, when we did our reductions. And, and the city kept forestry at nine at the time, but at the time, they were doing a lot in the parks. And then we gave the parks away and continued to keep nine in forestry. And I know that they were behind in being able to go around and do just the routine checking of the, the health of the trees and the trimming and so on. And I've seen them out quite a bit in the last couple of years, moving around town, doing that proactive maintenance. But I was wondering whether they were caught up at this point. And still, if we're doing things for free for the county in terms of park maintenance, and if we are, is there a trade-off of something that the county is, is doing for us? The net, of course, being do we still really need nine people for forestry, so?
So I guess my short answer to the need, as part of the CIP process, we had a project that was approved in there called Asset Inventory. We do not have a digital inventory of our trees that we're responsible for. We don't have a, a good assessment other than the history the forestry department has with our trees of being able to tell you accurately how many of those trees are in decline, what is that replanning schedule that we need to have, are we staffed at the right level to provide all that service? We are a reactive, responsive forestry division at this point, and they're busy every day. So I would say that we're adequately staffed for what we're doing, but the, the long-term health of the trees and having good tree canopy, I mean, those trees are important to the visual presence of our community. Being able to plan for that and replace it, I couldn't tell you right now that we're, we're adequately staffed for that.
Okay. Well, I appreciate that consideration anyway. And then on the, on the project inspection, just to follow up on your comments, I mean, we, you made reference to the $2 million that we're proposing to add to streets, but we also already made a commitment of an extra $3 million a year, at least for three years. So is that, is it that $5 million together that's driving that?
So what I'd say, that's.
Project inspector?
Part of it. I mean, on the pavement management, we're looking to try and average a little over $24.4 million annually.
Right.
Over 10 years to get to a PCI of 60. So that's where that two and the three figures into that. But when I talk about 130 active projects that the engineering division of Public Works is responsible for, that includes not only the half-cent, the pavement management portion of the work, but also other projects that they get involved in, our facilities, the city hall renovation, fire station renovation, other things that they manage as project managers, that they get involved in. That position is to help us better deliver all those projects across the board, not just the streets projects.
And when we have that, sometimes it seems like there's redundancy. We have a, a public information officer, we have an engineer, we have a project inspector. Are, is there some streamlining going on as well in terms of?
So, yeah, absolutely. So our project inspectors are field staff that are engaged not only in doing field assessments, but when we have construction going on, we are filling vacant positions and able to take on more of that project inspection and management in-house, where in the past several years, we were actually contracting with consultants to do that. That's a significant savings to us when we can do that in-house, because, I mean, you know, design-wise, we're paying for a portion of a person's time. But when we're paying for project inspection, we're paying for a person to physically be there monitoring a project. And so those folks are, we are streamlining and being more aggressive in using our in-house resources to manage that. But the project engineer, like I said, they are, they're doing multiple things from developing the contracts, the scope of work, making sure that design plans are done and meet the needs of what we need from a plan standpoint, working through the bidding phase, working with the contractors, working with our right-of-way agents as we have to acquire easements or right-of-way to see if we can lessen the impacts, work with the property owners. And then during construction, actually working with the contractor as issues arise to, to make changes, whether it's responses to traffic control changes or changes due to unforeseen conditions on the project. So there's a lot of activity that that title project engineer does, that I don't think the, you would understand unless you were involved in that on a daily basis. And so the way to, I try to communicate it to you is, 15 projects per engineer, two hours per project a week, that's 30 hours just on projects. That's not the other administrative time, training time, other things that we need out of these folks as an organization. And I think that's a better level for sanity and health and keeping morale good.
Thanks. I just wanted to check. I get, I get on the other end of those projects and, and end up dealing with all those, where the residents or the businesses deal with whoever they can catch first, and they work their way through it. And so that's why I asked a question about the volume, because a lot of these, in the extra $5 million, are smaller projects also. So, just checking. Thank you.
Other questions? Now, I'm, so I, we're still going to go to parking fund discussion, correct?
Yes, sir.
Are we ready to do that? I think time-wise, we want to be moving along.
Yes, we're ready whenever you are.
Okay, we are. We'll go to parking fund discussion.
So we're passing out a chart right now, and while that's making its way around the room, just kind of want to reiterate what, what parking division is for the city of Topeka. That is primarily the management of our downtown parking. And that parking consists of garage facilities, it consists of surface lots that we charge monthly fees for you to park in those surface lots. 8th and Madison, they're south of Holiday, that's an example, one of the surface lots. We have one up by the Water Tower as well. And then also the management enforcement of the on-street metered spaces as well as timed spaces. And there's a lot of variation in pricing among those different spaces. When you think about the revenue, what you have in front of you is basically the snapshot of our revenue history versus our expense history. And the big takeaway for that is, you can see, the trend is not favorable with that current summary. Our revenues are declining and our expenses are growing. So not a good place to be. You know, if you think of parking like a business enterprise fund, we're, we're dipping into our fund balance on an annual basis. And so that's part of what's kicked off this, this parking study, is for us to say, okay, what, what changes do we need to make to downtown parking that meets our customers' needs? And we've got a lot of different customers. We've got the daily office workers, that's a lot of the garage space. So Councilman Jensen, when we talk about occupancy, that lease space is our eight-to-five business. That's what those leases primarily reflect. I mean, BNSF Garage, the 9th Street Garage is a little different animal because of the time of their operation. But if we have nightlife going on downtown and the retail, or the restaurant nightlife activity is expecting, those folks are out of the garages. And so now we have garages that could be put into use for that. And, you know, is that something we charge for? Or is that something that? And, you know, is that something we charge for, or is that something that we have free because we want people to get down there and use them, and then, as the things take off, then maybe there's a pricing standpoint? So our revenues, you know, come from the garages, they come from the surface lots, and then they also come from the on-street meters, and then the fines associated with people that Councilwoman Ortiz mentioned, you know, get tickets for not complying with the rules of not parking in the right block during the right time period, overextending the meter. And you layer that on top of our technology. A lot of the meter technology we have down there probably is not too far off from the gentleman that invented parking meters from Oklahoma City back in the 1920s, right? We have cash meters, we don't have a way for you to park and use a debit card, so that's a barrier, right, to some people using our parking. There's still people that will need cash, so that's one of the things we're looking at within the study. The downtown parking study, which is what I wanted to kind of focus this conversation on, to help us and help you make decisions about the policy related to the fund, we're in the listening phase right now. We have a steering committee made up of those different customer types from our downtown. We have residential building owners, we have retail business owners, we have corporate business partners, we have DTI, we've got the Chamber. And that steering committee is a sounding board for us as we work through the process. We're also pushing out a survey that will be advertised on our website, sent to a list of the email contact list that we have. We're also going to be putting out flyers to get as much feedback as we can from the community on what are the issues, because that's really where we need to start this conversation, not what's the solution, but what are the issues that we're hearing from different folks and trying to identify some commonalities between those issues. We know there's going to be different issues depending on that customer type, are you a short-term parker, are you a business owner that needs loading, all those different things. And so we're collecting that information along with the technical data, that supply and demand, what's our available parking supply and demand. And the important thing to remember about that, while the city is in the business of providing parking downtown, we also have private entities that provide parking downtown. We have garages owned by private individuals, you know. Don't know how many of you were with an arrangement that Cap Fed has with T-PAC, that they let T-PAC, they offer their garage for T-PAC to park in, provided that T-PAC pays for the security of that garage during their events. And so when we look at supply and demand, we are looking at the total supply of parking in the downtown area. And so that's one of the questions, you know, that we'll need to talk about as a policy, what's our role in providing that supply? We're also working with planning and, you know, that steering committee to what is that future demand? What is the need for parking? And trying to be geographic-specific, you know, is that in the sixth to 10th block over the next five years, or is it further out, and do we have adequate supply? And all that information will kind of be combined into, here's kind of the issues, some of the perception, some of the realities of what's going on parking, and, you know, bringing that back to the steering committee to make sure we've captured everything that we need to have, and then talk about what are recommendations to address those issues. And as we start to develop that, that'll be the time when we bring some information to council about, here's what we've heard, here's where we think we're headed, to kind of give you a heads-up of where we're going. And then working through that, and then starting to put some cost and an implementation schedule together against those recommendations, and then ultimately coming back to, you know, asking for action based on those decisions. And so that's going to be occurring in 2017. We have budgeted within the parking fund $400,000 for 2018, just as a placeholder for implementation of any ideas that come out of this parking study. And that could be as simple as thinking about, we have meters, do we pay for an app service and a barcode on those meters? That we're not buying technology, but we're purchasing a service that allows us to then start taking card payments at our meters, but then also, you've paid by that meter, you have this app service, you're in a meeting, you need to extend your time, you can do that on your phone.
That's clever.
And so, you know, we have some benefit in the fact that our technology is so old, we may be able to leapfrog some of the incremental technology out there and not have to invest in infrastructure. But then we do have these facilities, and to come back to the asset management, our garages are lots, those are assets that need maintenance. So upgrading our gate technology, that's included in the parking fund. We are working systematically to bring all our garage gates to be chip-reader compliant for the new security codes, so we've budgeted out for implementing those. We also have elevators in our garages, we've had issues with some of the elevators in our garages, and so we're budgeting to take care of those. So there's some real cost in there. And then, thank you, Mr. City Manager, signage and wayfinding this year. For some of the garages that are kind of in that sixth to 10th area, we're already, we just signed the purchase orders last week to install signage based on the wayfinding recommendations that actually sticks out from the garage, so as you're looking down the street, you can see that nice P that matches the aesthetics from our wayfinding. But then there's other things, you know, do we look at technology for the garages? So you get to that garage, how do you know that you're going to be able to get a spot pulling in there? And so can you create that digital message on the outside that says 14 spaces left? Some of those things that we want to be able to do, and that ties back to the gate technology as well. That's a broad overview, we'll just kind of stop there and see if there are more detailed questions.
Councilwoman Ortiz.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a quick question. I know at one time, we tried out the cards, whatever happened to that?
So I got two sides to that story in the short year I've been here. The first side was, we tried it and nobody used it. I think we had a very limited application of the card reader, because that's one of the comments I get constantly, is when are we going to be able? I know I personally, I don't carry cash typically, so coins, you know, to feed a meter, I would think there's a segment of our population out there that needs that ability to pay via card electronically. And the nice thing about the, like I said, that leapfrog technology, if we have that app service, the cash meter's still in place, so people that are using cash can still plug meter, but we're not buying a whole new parking stand to accommodate, go into a cash, or a non-cash operation.
So it just went away, Jason?
What I would say, a pilot project, and the folks that were responsible for that at the time did not feel it was successful and never moved forward with implementing it anywhere else. And I don't have good metrics or data from the history that I've seen to say that that was a good decision or bad decision, it was just the decision that was made at the time.
Councilman Emerson.
Thank you. And I'm sorry, you're probably going to get into this, the parking study, but, you know, a lot of bigger cities I go to now, they don't have individual meters. They might have a zone, and there's just a central thing, and you put in the number and what stall you're at or something. Because right now, I'm thinking, I don't know, for instance, Jason, in here, like, maintenance machinery and equipment, it's up to like $134,000 in 2017. That could be well-known, because garages are a different one, but I didn't know, for instance, you know, what individual meters cost to maintain, and, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, that's, there's lots of technology options out there for us to consider, and we'll be looking at, because those meters, they do have batteries that we have to replace, that's part of it, and then there's just, there's the labor part, right? We have to physically check and take the coins out of all those meters, even the ones where you don't see people parking. We're not monitoring, so there may be coins in there that we need to collect.
Take them all out and just put a sign up at each section.
Other questions on the parking? Seeing none, thank you.
Thank you. And I just, I appreciate the comments, but I just wanted to make one comment. As always, I say, I've got a great team, and that's what makes me look good in front of you, so really, they deserve a lot of the credit, the folks behind me in the room. Thank you.
Can we have a stand, Jason?
Yes, ma'am, I can. So they're not, if the Public Works personnel could stand.
Very good.
We've got Ben Schu, Brenda Hayes, Sharon Valderas, Brian Faust, and Brian Biggin-Watt, and they're all part of our Public Works management team.
Very good.
Thank you.
All right, and we're moving on.
Mr. Mayor, with your permission, I think we'll go ahead and call Brendan Wiley up here, and that way we'll finish up all the department presentations.
The zookeeper who's here has arrived, keeping care of the zoo, he's late, taking care of the zoo. And I have another commitment this evening, and I'm going to be leaving in a short time, so as I get up and leave, isn't because what you're saying, I have another calling this evening.
Mayor, members of the council, I truly appreciate that. And I apologize for being late. Had an incredible experience with top city interns this evening, great, great program. In regards to the zoo budget, the first slide shows the 3.8% increase. That translates to $95,000, and that increase is located in wages, benefits, and allowances, an increase of about just over $100,000. Fortunately, our facility fees are projected to be down in 2018, and that allows us to cover the difference, as well as spread some funds to some other needed lines within our budget. While we're looking at the pie chart, just a couple interesting things about it. Under contractuals, which is 33% of the zoo's budget, 49% of that goes to internal services, 27% of that goes to utilities. On the commodities portion, that 10% is $247,000 of our budget, 48% of that fee is animal food, and 17% of it is drug and lab supplies to care for the animals. On the second slide, regarding key performance measures, the first one, attendance, quick explanation on the top line. 2017, this year, we will see the start of a significant construction project. As such, we budgeted 7% less, and then 2018, when that project opens, we budgeted for a 15% increase. Now, the project this year is starting later, which means we may not see that decrease as significant, but may not see the increase until later either. The next two lines, the Docent program that we have started is phenomenal. They are amazing, amazing, amazing people, and I'm not sure that we didn't undervalue the time that they're putting in. We will easily hit that 10,000 hours this year, and with additional training academies coming up, we might exceed the 15,000 hours in 2018. The fundraising measure, I think it's important to recognize that if we are in a period of working on a master plan to increase the amount of infrastructure within our facility, there definitely is a private piece to that. And we live in a very generous community, and for the 2017 goal, we are about $535,000 into that one and a quarter million of new private funding this year. And then the last measure, we truly are looking for a, for lack of a better word, a better scientific approach to this measure. We do exit surveys as people leave, and we do a survey to FOTS members, which probably isn't an adequate cross-sampling of those we should be speaking to, so we are trying to work to improve that. Having said that, for this year, again, the decrease is a reflection of, we figure some people won't be happy with the inconvenience of construction projects. In regards to department highlights, we're looking for a big, bright year next year, and not only do we anticipate completing the Kalabunga Project and opening it, we will be in construction on the Kay's Garden Project and be utilizing more and more volunteers to increase length of stay of our guests. The carbon footprint item is both a mission-based goal, if you will, but tonight we'll call it a budget-based goal. We might actually be seeing a better-than-anticipated result by a solar array that was donated by Westar on our Animal and Man Building, and we'll be looking for additional ways to work at getting that carbon footprint down. And of course, expanding education program whenever and wherever we can. Last year, over 20,000 people participated in our formal education programs. We would like to push that, push that goal higher. With that, I will stand for questions.
Does anybody have any questions? Councilwoman Ortiz.
I don't have a question, I do have a comment. I'm a little offended at the zoo attendance, because we're getting ready to have a movie there. And I know that that's going to be a free movie, and I want you to tell me what night, because we're going to get the word out, and we're going to get over 500 people there, for instance. So that's going to help your attendance, right there. I'm a little offended at your comment there.
Well, then, I retract that comment.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
The date we are targeting is July 27. We have applied for a license to the movie Zootopia. I felt that that is somehow appropriate, and, but we probably shouldn't, we probably need to make sure we get the license for the movie.
I can get that.
Okay.
That's not a problem. What time? We're going to do this.
What time do you think?
7:30.
Okay, 7:30 it is.
It's still too late, it's stuck in those before.
Time you get people in, and we'll talk, we'll talk.
We'll talk.
No, we're not going to mic.
Councilwoman Schwartz.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. I wanted to just mention that we had a big meeting at the zoo, was it yesterday or the day before yesterday?
Yesterday.
Yesterday. And Representative Fred Patton, who's on the FOTS, the Friends of the Topeka Zoo Board, was there in the midst of his many hours of being on the floor at the Capitol. And that is so impressive, that, you know, that the zoo is that important, you know, to Topeka. And then Brendan mentioned that Brett Odeg with Visit Topeka is going to come, and he's also on the, Brendan's on the board of Visit Topeka. So I don't think people really realize the work that goes into getting the zoo attendance high and even increasing it. So thank you, Brendan, for all your work.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Hiller.
Thank you. Just a double-check, then. The new position that staff is proposing that would be assigned to do maintenance at the zoo, you think will be covered by increased revenue at the zoo? Is that what you said?
It is?
Okay.
No. And I'll expect Jason to throw something at me if I say anything wrong here. The facilities person at the zoo is covered by the facility fees that are already in the zoo's budget.
Uh-huh.
For 2018.
But the new person, are we talking about the same position?
I believe so.
Okay. Is covered by the fees that come out of your...
Correct. We increased our facilities fees by that, by the amount of that position.
Okay. And with that, is there, and maybe I'm just not looking carefully enough, is there an additional contribution from the general fund to you to support that, or is the revenue up to the point where it's neutral to the general fund?
I believe the answer is neither. And if you're to look at that line on page 126, if you notice the 2017 budget line item, the 346, 419, that's our current facility fees this year. For the 2018 budget, a better analysis of usage fees occurred, if you will, which which reflected a lower facility fee for the zoo. We took the lower facility fee and added the cost of the new position to our facility fees because we then had room within our budget to do that without increasing anything.
I think I have it. Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you.
Does anybody have any other questions about zoo? Thank you, Mr. Wiley. Mr. Gerber, are we moving on to ALS now?
Deputy Mayor, we do have that presentation left. As you know, we had a brief one Saturday, but Chief Duke would like to come forward again and give you some better detail and information.
Okay, very good. Should we, should we take just a couple-minute break to freshen up here? It's almost 8 o'clock, and we normally do that at 8?
Are we still going to do the funds tonight also?
I'd say as time allows.
Okay.
No break? Okay, let's keep going.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. To my left here, your right, is Deputy Chief Kelly Adams. And also, we have Mike Benson, our business manager. So I've been asked to address with you further the ALS service that we are proposing to start the fire department in. And one of the things I've been asked to do is try to explain what that is and what it brings to the city and the fire department. Currently, we have a BLS service. All the fire apparatus are BLS with EMTs on it. And they have BLS medical equipment with them. BLS, basically, you use the ABCs, airway breathing, circulation. That's what they're trying to do. They're trying to stabilize until our ALS service gets to the point that they're at. We're proposing going to advanced life support. It's got advanced inhibition, advanced cardiac monitoring, defibrillation, intravenous access. That's starting your IVs and everything, and drug therapy. Examples of these type of calls are cardiac arrest, severe trauma, stroke, drug overdoses, and drowning. There's a lot more to that, but those are some of the more critical ones. So to pick a fire department, the data that we were able to extrapolate from, we got it from, actually, from the ambulance administrator for the county of Shawnee. We run 14,500 medical calls annually, average. Basic life support calls around 6,000, average. And our advanced life support are over 8,500. Our response times to the calls, we usually respond 4 minutes and 30 seconds. That's the average to any call, any call, because we have the static stations with the people in there, the apparatus and everything in there. ALS response to those calls are usually over 50, sorry, 5 minutes. So where does that put us? That's 10,588 calls that we need ALS service there. And Ted, please. Ted, next. Oh, sorry. We're doing the golden hour here. This is what the standard that they use for ALS calls. And if you look at that small graph there, you know, as every minute goes by, the chances of death grow if we, the person doesn't get ALS service to them in a prompt fashion with the right people and the right equipment. So when we look at our 4 and 1/2, 5-minute response time, that also includes our turn light time and dispatch time as well. So that time of 4 and 1/2, 5 minutes is actually moving to around 7. So with the ALS part of it, you know, we want to deliver that ALS service to the patients while we wait on our ALS partner coming in. That's all we're trying to do. You know, there's been times where the ALS is out in other parts of the county and everything, and their response time is a lot slower because they're responding from further away. So we want to deliver that ALS service to the patient and stabilize them. So when the ALS transporter shows up, all they're going to do is put them on the gurney and take off. We have the people, 12 paramedics right now. And all we're trying to do is bring that service, upgrade that service for the community of Topeka. How are we going to do it? Well, the timeline that we've come up with then is looking to apparatus in 2018. We're going to staff them, like I said, with those individuals that we have that are already paramedics, who are already on the scene anyway. But this time, they're going to have the equipment to perform ALS care to the patient, to the member of our community. We're going to have to purchase, obviously, the equipment to make that piece of apparatus an ALS apparatus. And basically, we're going to have everything on the fire apparatus that's on an EMS unit, except for the stretcher. We're not transporting, all we're doing is trying to stabilize the individual before the ALS transport unit gets there. 2019, 2020, we're going to try to increase our numbers to another 2 stations, another 2 pieces of apparatus. So we will place the apparatus in those areas that we know that we have our brunt of our EMS calls. That's all we're trying to do. If it, as it works, will go along. This is not a cookie cutter. This is a hybrid. This is something, we're going to develop this for the city of Topeka to bring this service to the city of Topeka. And we're going to continue on to try to improve it until our, you know, apparatus do go towards ALS only with, following through each 2 years with the elected officials to try to move forward with that type of service that we think the citizens of Topeka deserve.
Does anybody have any question for fire? Councilwoman clear.
Yeah, I need some clarification on this budget, on these numbers. Under other ALS patient supplies, I think the airway equipment's 2,000, but then the training equipment for the airway is 8,000?
Yes, ma'am. What that, that is just like any other part of, when you're doing medical, you need the training equipment to simulate, it's basically a simulator to make sure the individual's using the equipment properly before they get put on the apparatus to deliver the service. It's just like a defibrillator. We have a training defibrillator that we use, and it actually shows the individual how it's working. And that's basically what it is. It is a trained piece of apparatus.
Okay, and then your disposables? I'm trying to figure out. It's 7,000, but replacing them is only 500.
It's only as we use it. We're with, running with our ALS partner. They're going to have to, whatever we use disposable-wise, they will replenish it to us as we use it. And then they will do the charging, because we don't charge, we won't charge for this. We will just deliver the service, and they come in and transport the individual. Like I say, they will replace any disposables that we use on a call.
But if you're buying, why buy $7,000 if you're only going to use $500 worth? Am I reading that right? So you're going to spend $7,000 for disposables, and to replace those is 500?
25, yeah.
This says replacing disposables.
7,000 is the initial stock that we have, that we'll have on hand. And then the 2,500 is?
It says 500 online, replacing disposables, 500.
I can, but the people on the TV can't.
Oh, I can hear. I'll take this.
Using Councilwoman Hiller's mic.
The 7,000 for the initial year is for, to, for stock that we will have in our storage areas for that. And the 20, what we're proposing in the 2,500 is to replenish.
Where do you see 2,500? Well, I'm looking down below here on the replacing disposable. Is that another kind of disposable? Look down under.
Oh, okay. Oh, I'm sorry. I'm into the training equipment.
Well, I don't know what I'm under.
The one under operationals, that's $500 is because in year 2, we'll have 4 trucks, and in year 3, we'll have 6 vehicles. So obviously, that'll go up because we'll have more vehicles to.
But is this talking about the same disposables?
The ones in, under training are disposables for the training.
Yes.
Training courses.
Okay.
The one that's under operationals is the disposables that are on the trucks, on the apparatus.
So you're going to spend $7,000 for the training and only $500 on a truck?
Because AMR will be, will be giving us what we use to replenish the trucks.
But they won't give you any for training?
No. Training, 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 training we do in our building. AMR has no control over that.
Okay, and it says replacing any broken equipment? What are you guessing is going to be broken?
I'll defer to you guys on that one, but.
I'm looking for this here. Okay, okay, that is across the board for the EMS service itself. Obviously, there's going to have to be, with using the equipment, it's going to be used in real-life situations for training. And obviously, there are times when the equipment gets broken. We're going to have to have it reservice if it, and recalibrate it with the defibrillators and everything. And that comes at as a cost as you use it, use it. You're going to have to have it recalibrated again so the training is, indication from the training that's going to be done will show up properly on the equipment, the training equipment. It's like a computer. You're going to have to reprogram it, recalibrate it. So there's cost to that sort of thing with all the equipment.
It's not under training. It's under apparatus modification, isn't it?
No, it's under operations. That's
Oh, okay.
That's going to be what's in the field.
So you're just, some things are going to get broken?
Some things get broken. They need to be recalibrated.
So you're just guessing 3,000?
Well, like Chief said, some items will need to be, like the defibrillators will have to be recalibrated each year.
How often? Each year?
I believe.
Yes, yes. It depends on the usage.
But that's not really broken. That's just a requirement for that equipment, right?
Councilwoman, if I might, I think the answer to your question is yes. It's a guess. Not having had this program, it's an anticipated startup cost and an ongoing maintenance cost potentially. I'll use one of your favorite words. It's a contingency.
Contingency.
Because we want to be sure we have the equipment available if something happens.
Okay, and then the textbooks and other educational equipment? Down under, I mean, why isn't that up at training or up here at education? That's $4,000.
Councilwoman clear. What that is, we are going to have to purchase drug books for the apparatus. So when they know per individual, because different size people will have to have different amounts, you know, dosages and everything. And that's a reference book that they can refer to.
That's on the truck?
On the apparatus that we're going to be using. Yeah, they will need, the reference materials, just like they have on the EMS transport units. Like I say, they're going to have everything the transport unit has, except for the stretcher. And that's so they can reference and make sure they're given the proper dosages and so forth for the patient.
And then additional state or medical director or required equipment? Is that just another guess that they're going to require something? Or do you know they are?
The state or medical director and everything, they can determine what we, just like they do right now. They determine what an EMS unit, what a fire apparatus on medical, the state as well, will determine what you need to carry there to be recognized as an ALS provider. So that changes at times as they look at the, at the, the board of EMS looks at what is on apparatus, the new thing coming in. They're going to require that you carry certain things or replace certain things that may be outdated.
Is this every year?
It's going to be up to the board. They look at, just like any medical professional, they review with their quality assurance and everything to see how calls are operated, see if they work right with the equipment that they do suggest to have at that time. But they can change that at any time. And yes, it is a contingency or a guess at what usually would come up annually.
See, that concerns me. When I looked at this, I thought, wow, this is kind of loose. I mean, and I understand it's new, and I understand we don't know. But I'm concerned that this doesn't end up being 350,000. I mean, what happens if your numbers aren't? I mean, what happens if this medical director ends up being 10,000, and we break $10,000 of the equipment? What are we going to do? Come out of contingency money?
Councilwoman, it's just like with any other operation within the city. If something happens to the equipment, they have to have a contingency to replace it if they're going to deliver the service.
I know, but I'm talking about everything on here. I mean, how, how set in concrete is this budget?
I feel it's a very workable budget to get us going. And obviously, as we go and we learn, and we're going to have to adjust whatever way is needed to keep maintaining the service.
Councilwoman, Deputy Mayor, I'll jump in quickly. This is something that internal staff has looked at for a number, a significant period. As you know, this is continuing something that the governing body implemented with the last budget in terms of hiring an EMS medical director on the fire department staff. And since that person was hired, part of his role has been to evaluate these things. So he's spent time looking at it, and that's an area of expertise for him. So we are as comfortable as we can be, given the fact that it's a brand-new program. We're trying to mitigate that by implementing it, recommending to implement it halfway through the year so that we can, again, just help kind of mitigate some of the risks. We fully, as we've said from the beginning, we fully want this to be a pilot program, stair stepping into it. If we have success moving next year, then we'll continue to implement it as proposed here.
Thank you.
Councilman Emerson.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Chief Duke? I'd sent some questions on maybe Sunday night, and did you happen to get those?
I did receive them from Mr. Hawkins, and I did reply to him today with some of the, some of the information, but it may not have been the information that you were requesting.
Okay.
We're just vetting the responses and making sure it's in a good format and we're comfortable with.
Okay. Well, if I may, you know, one of the questions I had was, do we have an idea, first of all, what we pay AMS right now for our ambulance service? I'm just looking for some data points to know, hey, is this a good deal, a bad deal?
The AMR and the ALS transport that they have has got, the city is not involved in that. That's a county contract.
Okay. Does it ever get allocated, or does that just come out of property? No? It gets built to your insurance. Right, right. I'm just curious, what does it cost them a year to run all their ambulances? Do we know that?
Councilman, the one association they would have directly with the city is they, on an annual basis, get a franchise from the city, which allows them to operate within the city. That's something that this body did a couple of months ago, renewed that franchise. But that's really the only, aside from our association by being county citizens, that's, that's our only payment into it.
So I could get that from the county, though, probably?
I think we are working to get that for you. It's just the turnaround time wasn't sufficient for us.
I know you guys have a lot on your plates right now. My other question was, and you probably saw the question, and please, you know, take this. If you came and looked at my company, you'd, I'm sure you'd say, well, why are they doing this this way? But there's a reason we do it. And I was just wondering, the other day, I was going down 20 Adam Street, and a fire engine came by. And then you had like a suburban or maybe excursion or something going behind. And I guess what occurred to me was, why wouldn't we use those as the AMS vehicles? Then unless the apparatus is needed for a particular thing, it's a terrible accident or something. But if you're going to someone's house to just take a defibrillator in, why wouldn't 2 guys in that excursion, you're not rolling a huge fire truck, taking that out of, you know, commission then for response to fires?
But that particular call, that particular vehicle is actually a command vehicle. They were not, let me rephrase that.
Sure.
A command vehicle rolls out on certain calls. If we have an EMS call, an engine goes out. A BLS engine goes out on that call, one piece of apparatus in their district, where they're already there, the buildings are, the guys are there. They are responding to the BLS calls. If there is, as you said, an excursion, a type.
If there is, as you said, an excursion, a type vehicle, SUV, that is a command, excuse me, a command vehicle, it's probably responding more likely to a fire alarm or a rescue call, which could be a motor vehicle accident on the highway. And they are there to be the incident commander at the scene. So that, this, we follow NMPA standards on that. So that vehicle was actually more than likely not going to, an EMS call could either have been going to a fire type call or a more, how would you put, the need for, to have more equipment on a rescue call like a motor vehicle accident on the highway or.
Could it be used for AMS calls?
You could adapt any vehicle, you know, but communities have to decide how they're, they're going to, we have the people, we have the apparatus there, and they're trained. So to go out and purchase another vehicle and put the, the equipment in there may defeat the purpose of using those people that are already there, who are going to be going on the call anyway to provide that ALS service.
Right, and just to clarify, I meant using your existing ones, adding, I mean, if you got one person in there in a huge vehicle, this stuff doesn't take much room, does it? I mean, the medical supplies could fit in the back. And again, this is why I asked the question in advance. I wanted to have this discussion offline, but since you're here tonight.
The, that type, that type of vehicle that we presently have would not be adaptive to that type of call.
Okay.
Because of the fact of the, the quality of, they need heavy-duty electrical, because we are having to have equipment and they're totally on charge at all the time. And it's only a basic vehicle to get a command officer to a scene.
Okay, okay.
And I would be willing to sit with you sometime and show you, actually take you out there and watch it happen.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Ortiz. The, Councilwoman Schwartz actually interrupted first, so we'll go there first.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. I'm very, very supportive of ALS, ALS, advanced life support over our basic life support that we have. And I'm very glad that you came from a community that had ALS and was using the advanced life support in response to 80% now. When I started on the council, it was 75% of the calls were medical calls. Now it's up to 80% of the calls are medical calls. So, I mean, I think we do need to go to ALS. And it's an unknown in Topeka because we haven't done it yet. So I think you have to estimate on some of that. My question goes to the response time, Chief. Is that the same response time that, that you had in Wyandotte County, the four to five minutes, four and a half to five minutes? Or are we exceedingly faster in our response time than other communities?
It totally depends on the makeup of the community, as to population and infrastructure and how many stations they have and manpower and everything. Actually, Kansas City, Kansas, was lower.
Lower?
Yes.
Okay. And if I may, my follow-up question then on that. We have, like in my district, we have no fire station in the district. Many times, the Mission Township responds to calls out there. Is the Shawnee Heights District, the Mission and Forbes Field, are they ALS or not? There's just the basic life support.
The basic.
So, okay, is that going to affect our contracts with them or how we work together with those fire districts, township, fire districts?
And that all depends on how we look at the, the future master plan, how this is all going to work, what we are going to be able to deploy in certain areas of the community. And we will work on that as it grows. That's the intention, just to put the toes in the water first. Don't jump in feet-first and try to do it all at once. Build it and build it to a custom fit to the community.
Well, I do also agree with Councilman Emerson that sometimes you see a response and you see all this equipment pull up and you know it's a medical call, and there's five or six guys, because I know we don't have too many women on the job yet. So if there's, you know, when I first came on the council, we were having fire trucks at gyms. And my husband goes to gym every day, and he said that hasn't happened for a long time. And I think that, that just the public perception of all that big equipment showing up is a real concern in the community. And so I think you're doing a good job trying to get that all as to the public perception that we need ALS, we need to work on, you know, making our fire department the best in the state, because we are the state capital. Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Ortiz.
Thank you, Chief. I had a side talk with Mr. Henderson over here. I will be schooling him, but I will hope that you would school him as well. Fire is not easy to understand, and, and, you know, you have to really get in it and study it and live it and ride with it. But I agree with Councilwoman Schwartz to a degree. We need to educate our public on how much the vehicles cost, on, on what we're doing. We just haven't had a, done a good job at that. And then the public will understand why that big old truck is going down there to that medical call with all the guys on it. Because if they get a fire, they can't turn back around and go pick up the rest of the guys at all, at all costs. You know, with, with the time, it, it, we, we have to make sure. So I'll have another conversation with Mr. Henderson. I'll let you know how that goes and where you need to pick up.
Thank you, Councilwoman Ortiz.
He's just a little rusty there. That's all.
Thank you, Ms. Ortiz.
Councilwoman Jensen.
Oh, dear. Yes, that's one of the things I learned about the fire service early on, is you never, never want to separate the company from the truck, because the minute there's a crisis and they have to go back to the station to get it, you've doubled, tripled your response time. And when it's your life on the line, I'll let those trucks roll wherever they want to, as long as the guys are there, ready to go. I appreciate the budget. I appreciate your attempt to forecast the costs of this. At the end of the day, I don't care. These are people's lives. That's more important than money any day. I think these are very reasonable estimates, and this is a very reasonable plan. But people's lives are worth more than money. And so as long as this is within reason and budget, I will absolutely support it. And I thank you for your efforts in getting this done much faster than I expected it to be done, quite frankly.
Thank you, sir.
Does anybody have any other questions for fire? Yeah. Councilwoman Hiller?
When I had my one-on-one, what I wrote on my sheet was that you all explained to me that the fire department new initiative was ALS and Fire Cadet, and that the cost for ALS was 200, for 2018, was 250,000 one time and 500,000 a year. And we met about it more than once. Did I miss something in what I, did I misunderstand when I wrote that down?
Are you talking what we have here?
It was the one-on-one with staff, but it was the, we, we, they started out by giving us a bullet sheet with some numbers on it, and fire was number six.
So these are what Chief Duke and the fire department have provided are updated revised numbers based on just updates to the.
Well, the 243,000 for 2018 on this new sheet sort of matches 250,000 startup that you told me was the number before, but you also said there was 500,000 a year correspond, with that.
That was an estimate. And so, once we've gotten updated numbers from fire, we have adjusted that. So this, what they provided is?
Is the total.
Up to date? Yes.
Councilwoman, I'd say that 244 to 500 was simply an extrapolation of a half a year to a year. But as Nick and the chief noted, these are more up-to-date numbers for you. It's good, it's a good story.
Well, yeah, I mean, because the budget was already done. So if it's not really 750,000 a year, it's really only 250,000 a year, then where's, is there extra money in the budget?
I think that initial 500 for the second year would be like the full cost for that year, not an additional 500, so.
Okay.
I apologize if I misled you on that one. But what you see here, the 2019, 2020 cost, those would be the full costs for that year. So it wouldn't be an additional 368 or an additional 398. That would be their estimated cost for that for 2019 and 2020. So it would be 124,000 increase in 2019, additional 30,000 in 2020.
Well, that's, that's less than it was described, so. Councilman Emerson had asked you about the county. I mean, even though we're not being paid, isn't the county subsidizing AMR annually? They give them money besides their contract?
Yes, ma'am, they are. They, they subsidize that, and then they let AMR bill the patient or insurance companies. That's where they, they make their money.
I guess I would, you know, I don't want to double-spend tax money, would be my point. So I thought, I think that Councilman Emerson's question is good. I mean, the subsidy to AMR is to pay for their ALS service as well as their transportation service. Is that correct? That's what they're being contracted to do?
That would be my understanding of the situation, yes. I'm not sure it's fair to characterize it as double-spending tax money, because it's not like we would, our personnel, if they were ALS-trained, would show up on a scene at the same time as AMR, and they'd be doing the same thing together. The point is, we can get there more quickly.
Well, where I was going to go with that is if we're doing the, the ALS role, then do they even need to show up unless transport is needed?
Always do transport in ALS.
I mean, in terms of a master plan, I'm just trying to understand how this whole thing would work when we got it going.
That we would, if it was an ALS call, we would get ALS treatment to that individual a lot quicker, as we explained, because we have the personnel, the equipment to get them there. You know, yes, they would come.
They would come even so, I mean.
And transport, because we, we can transport. We're not wanting to transport. We're just trying to get that standard of care to that individual at a quicker time because of the fact that AMR may not get there in that, like the little graph showed you, as time.
But a high percentage of those calls do not ever involve transport.
These are ALS calls. These are emergency calls. BLS is, BLS is where they may not transport.
Gotcha.
ALS, ambulance or helicopter.
Okay.
I apologize for not explaining that right. Sorry.
That's all right. I'm, I'm trying to just wrap around it. There have been conversations over the years, and I didn't know we were going to do this. One of the things that people said to me before is in terms of, and these were people who didn't think it was a good idea, so I'm not taking a position, but that the, the medicines that we're talking about are, are, they will expire. They've got deadlines. And so some of these disposables would actually be wasted, or they could be. Now, the understanding I heard later was that, that that would likely not happen, because basically, you don't use most of that. You got to have it on the truck in case you need it. But for the most part, a lot of that doesn't get used within its lifespan, is that, is that we would be able to trade those out to AMR so that somebody would use them within their lifespan, and that's how we would refresh?
That is correct. That's how the, these type of operations usually work when you have two, like the public and the private working together. One will work, they work with each other under the direction of a common medical director who will explain to them, you need to change their drugs out as the lifespan expires on.
Okay.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. Thank you.
Councilwoman DeLaEslay, can you wrap us up?
Absolutely. I just wanted to make sure that, that there was no confusion for the people that were listening at home. One of the comments that was said was, I want to make sure that we're not double taxing our, our taxpayers when we're having our ambulances show up at the same time that we have our, our AMR people. And I think that what the constituents really need to listen to is the fact that the city is making a conscious effort and investment in their, in their safety. I think that Councilman Jensen said it best when he said, you know, this, it's going to cost us something, but it's going to be the lives of our residents. What this is doing, absolutely, the county is paying for the transport, but what the city is doing is making a commitment for the people in our city to have immediate, as much possible, shortening the time of the response that they're going to receive. So I, I'm so excited that this is happening. And it's, again, one of those priorities that we have as a community. Public safety is one of our number one, is where most of our budget goes. So just really appreciate this.
Thank you, ma'am.
Can we consider discussion on ALS closed? Okay. Thanks, Chief Duke.
Thank you.
Mr. City Manager, are we going on to number 10?
Deputy Mayor, I think that's at the discretion of this body. We're certainly prepared to move on. We have folks here, but don't know everyone's plans or schedule either.
What is number 10?
Other funds, budget, motor, motor fuel fund?
Just one, is that correct? Yes, we've called that one. If there are other funds that you would like to discuss anytime, we can bring those up, possibly at our June 14 meeting. But based on previous workshop Saturday and last night, Motor Fuel Fund was the one that came up. So if there are other ones that we'd like to follow up on, we can try and answer as many questions.
Is this the last item for the council?
We have one more budget workshop scheduled for June 14, so a week from tonight, at the Law Enforcement Center. And that is designed for any wrap-up that we have on, on budget questions, any outstanding questions on the proposed budget and kind of wrapping up the discussion on the, on the 2018 budget at that meeting.
Okay. Counsel, do we want to go on to motor fuel or do that on the 14? Councilwoman Ortiz.
Deputy Mayor, I make a motion that we call it a night and adjourn. It's been a long two nights. And I'm not only thinking about myself, but as well as staff.
Okay. Councilwoman Ortiz makes the motion. Jensen, seconds.
Before we vote, just to clarify whether we would go over the funds at all at the next meeting, or whether they're, that meant just to not review them. I mean, we've done some of these really in the course of the review, maybe half of them, but the other half, we've not. So that's.
I think a brief overview, a brief overview.
I think if we want to, we will. I mean.
And perhaps we need to email staff which funds we'd like to review.
Thank you. That's, that's perfect. Again, we're prepared for motor fuel, but as we've indicated, if you have specific funds you'd like to talk about, we'll be prepared for those as well.
That's a good idea.
Well, if I may, Deputy Mayor, can we get a breakdown of all the funds? Just a, just a quick email blitz for the new people? I mean, how do they know what funds they might, might want to look at if they don't know?
It's the whole tab, and they gave us an index today, which is helpful.
That's fine.
We have a motion and a second. Councilwoman Schwartz?
As a discussion, I would just like to add, three years ago, when Councilwoman Hiller led the budget discussions, many meetings, she and I were just here, and we have new council members now. But this has been awesome to really cover in-depth the entire budget and to have the entire governing body involved in asking questions about what's in the city budget. So commend you all for being here. It's a lot of extra meetings, but it's really nice. Thank you.
So we'll call the vote. All those in favor?
Anybody who pokes dies.
Seven, yeah.
Oh, dear. Thank you all.
Meeting is adjourned.
Karen, do you remember those meetings?